Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:30, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We always appreciate having you here. We'll begin with invocation by Pastor Bob Dierdorff, beautiful Savior Lutheran Church. Bob?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, your word tells us you're not a God of confusion, but a God of order. And we thank you, Lord, for the order you give to our land and to our city. We ask that order and harmony would prevail at this night's meeting. We ask that you'd grant protection and diligence to our city employees and staff. We ask you to especially protect those who work in the law enforcement and first response offices and protect also our nation's armed forces. We ask that wisdom and insight and also kindness prevail and that your wisdom leads us to good decisions for our community. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Here.
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 Okay, if you haven't had an opportunity, if you didn't get a copy of our agenda, there should be a copy back here on the table, back here by the entryway to your right. If I could just draw your attention to the meeting procedures, I'll share that with you real very quickly. The public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please state your name and address and limit remarks to three minutes or less. Out of respect to city employees, we request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or mayor individually and in violation will be declared out of order. So I appreciate your help in that. Well, a current copy of the Open Meetings Act in Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. And we'll begin with the consent agenda. All matters under consent agenda are considered by the city council be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. All right, item number one is approval minutes of regular meeting on April 16th and work session on April 24th of 2019. Place on file ML&amp;W reports for March 2019. Sent application of Daniel Steele as liquor license manager at Walmart number 1585 located at 1401 South Dewey Street to the Liquor Control Commission with no recommendation. Item number four, approval application by Pal's Brewing Company, LLC for a special designated license on nine consecutive Thursdays from June 13th, 2019 to August 8th, 2019, from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at Fort Cody Trading Post at 221 Heligon Drive for a music series. Item number five, approved application by the Platt Inc., DBA Platt Bar for a special designated license on June 14th, 2019, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. and June 15th, 2018. Is that correct? That should be 2019, shouldn't it? That should be 2019, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. at Platt Bar, 119 West Sixth Street, for a beer garden. And item number six, authorize the sale of surplus vehicles and equipment at the next police impound auction to be held May 18th, 2019. And item number seven, accept bids and award a contract to Janssen Dodge for one new 2019 one-ton dump truck for the water department in the amount of $46,850.
We approve items one through seven at the consent agenda. Second.
And that motion passes. Item number eight on the regular agenda. Item number eight is a public hearing and action on recommendation by the City of North Platt Planning Commission on an application by William Millison, owner and Tiffany Forbes purchaser, for a conditional use permit to allow a daycare center in R3 dwelling district located at 820 South Walnut on property described as Lot 1, Shannon Administrative Subdivision, North Platt, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Could I just ask one more time? Realize this is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak? Okay. I believe, did you want to say that again?
Yeah, I just wanted to make some comments that I, when I drove by there the other day. Judy, could we get those things put up?
Wait, hold it. Wait, wait, wait. Yeah, we still have a motion on the floor to close public hearing. I assume there was a motion yet. Okay, so we need to vote on that yet to close the public hearing. Okay, that motion passes. Public hearing's been closed. Now?
Now move that we adopt the recommendation by the City of North Platt Planning Commission on an application by William Millison, owner and Tiffany Forbes purchaser for a conditional use permit to allow a daycare center in an R3 dwelling district located at 820 South Walnut on property described as Lot 1, Shannon Administrative Subdivision, North Platt, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Okay, now, sir. Yes.
Okay, Judy, may I have your bellies here? What I'm asking her to do is, when I looked at that the other day, I saw all sorts of traffic problems. I'm going to recommend, I can't do anything else other than recommend that, but I would say that you fix it or put signs up so only could come in from the east, make a right-hand turn in, and then when you go out, make right-hand turns going out. If you come from the west and cross a couple lanes and if you go out, cross a couple lanes, it's potential wreck.
Is Tiffany here? Oh, you're Tiffany. I just wanted to say something as long as what Lawrence is saying is the fact that I went over there too and I would highly recommend that maybe you do something with that little property there at the alley that maybe you could do some parking there so that people don't have to pull into that front lot and have to back out on the fillip. Okay, that's my only concern.
Yeah, if you would, just...
I think if you're gonna, wait a minute. I think if you put up signs, I think there should be a traffic study done before we start putting up any signs.
Exactly.
Would that be a true statement, Doug?
It'd be a wise thing to do.
Okay, I think a traffic study should be done before we start throwing signs up and around out in that particular area. Just saying.
Mr. Ostendorf asked me to get this Google Earth picture. This is kind of dark, but basically this is the site right here. This is the house. And then this is Philip. He was really concerned with traffic coming this way. Now, we do have a turn lane. His concern was with traffic coming this way and turning across here. He was just afraid with the amount of traffic that that might be a hazard. So he kind of wanted me to show how that is. But this is a turn lane, so you can stack cars in the turn lane.
Yes.
So that was just his concern and he just wanted me to show what it would look like. And then I think Tom gave him...
Yes.
...this, which...
There's between 6,000 and 9,000 cars a day go by that place.
Let's see if I can change this. Oops, that went the wrong way. Okay, this, you can see it a little bit better. The ones with the circles are right where, whoops.
I'm more concerned with them leaving the property and making a left-hand turn and going east on the southbound lane there, or the, not southbound, the southern lane. You're crossing three lanes there.
Yeah, because right here is the amount of traffic that's coming down there, the 9,175.
Isn't that right there at Dewey though, Judy?
Yes, that is right at Dewey.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be quite as much coming across here. But that was just kind of, he was wanting to just make a point that there's a lot of traffic, so.
Thank you.
I'm gonna suggest, I think the motion was to approve the conditional use. You'll see in your materials that there is some recommended language that you should use on a conditional use application. If you wish to make a motion to approve the application, if you want to protect yourself from challenge, there's some verbiage there that you ought to incorporate in your motion. If you want to make a motion to deny the application, there is similarly some language there that you ought to include, which would then be included in the minutes, which will protect your action from challenge. So I'm gonna, did you want to? So I'm gonna recommend that whoever made the motion withdraw the motion with the consent of the second and you make a new motion using the language that's been presented to you in your materials.
If I might, Lawrence, the only concern I have about that is for the council to do that, any kind of a sign we put out on this, and this is a federal aid route, would have to be done after doing an engineering study to be able to put any type of signs out on our right-of-way. So it's quite a bit more of a process if you want to go that way or make that recommendation. I just want them to be aware of what is there. And they should recommend that to their clients. Okay, I understand.
Do you, yeah, do you want to remove your second?
Yes.
Okay. I'll remake the motion now as to, I move that we find the request for a conditional use permit to allow a daycare center located at 820 South Walnut meets minimum standards stated in the North Platt Code of Ordinances, section 156, 322, and approve and grant the conditional use permit requested with the conditions that all elements of the application are complied with.
Oh, yes, sir.
Since we're concerned about, it's a safety issue to me. Since there have been concerns that seem to make perfect sense, I think if we approve it without addressing that sign issue, that traffic issue, in light of the discussion tonight, we'd be in a weak position legally. If one or half of these events happened, it's just...
I guess the deal is, Jim, that we would also be in a liable situation if we put signs up out there that were not warranted by an engineering study.
If we do this before we do the traffic study and traffic signs, and we have, in that interim time, we have, we get hurt out there in the traffic event, I don't think that's an idea for us to do.
Got a question. Tiffany, how many people are we talking about? Since you're moving from the north side over to this side, are you losing customers? Are you gaining more? What do you anticipate in your number?
It will be smaller. So we have at most right now only two or three cars that drop off at one time. And there are spaces there in front of that garage that would, for four cars, and people pull out. And we were gonna discuss with our parents how to come in and go out safely.
Okay.
Kim, would it be appropriate for us to ask the owner to put signs on the property, on her property, that would direct the traffic in and out of her property as part of our approval?
It may be, yeah. The reason, or the thing that I would worry about there is if you put a sign up on that side of the road, it could be confusing to the motoring public there where it is that close to the intersection. So again, not only would you be looking at the turning movements, you'd be looking at the placement of the signs as well, which again would be covered by the manual and uniform traffic control devices.
I guess what I was thinking is, could we have her put on her property that right-hand turn only or left-hand?
Is your microphone on?
We could have a, thanks, it's right. Have a sign that said, "Right-hand turn only or left-hand turn only, whichever's appropriate," so that the traffic exiting the site turns into the flow of traffic.
I think that could be recommended, but that's kind of what I have in mind.
Jim?
I'd like to address something to the applicant. Do you have an established plant base already?
Yes, yes. I've owned it for seven years.
I'm sorry, Kevin?
Ma'am, could you step up to the microphone, please? And please give us your name and address.
Tiffany Forbes, 517 South Bailey Avenue, North Platt, Nebraska.
Thank you.
I've owned it for seven years. It's been in business for 30.
Okay, and so you can operate, but this is a new location, right?
Right.
So you can continue to operate your business in the old location?
No, they're ending our lease, so we had to find somewhere else to go.
You can be out on your year as of?
I'll guess 30th. Where they're ending our lease. So we had to... Mm-hmm, of this year.
Well, the other thing, Jim, that I would suggest to you is is that you can do a traffic study without having traffic there, but it's difficult not knowing how many people you're gonna have coming, going, whatever.
Well, you have the thought that you already have established customers, then I think it might be a good idea to make sure that internally, as you work with your customer base, that you make each and every one of them who deliver children to you aware of that traffic situation.
Yes, we were gonna do that.
So that they can be more careful and come in properly and so on, so on, so on. That might just be helpful to do that.
Yes, as soon as we knew that we had it, we were gonna discuss with the parents about the move and everything and tell them how to come in and out safely.
Doug, when you made your comments earlier, were you looking for that motion to be potentially extended with those points, one through five? I know for my planning commission days that we would typically include that with conditional use permits.
I was going to mention that if you voted in favor of the motion, you'd also be voting in favor of these elements and I will state them on the record. So at this time, I will mention that if you vote in favor of this motion, you're also finding that the use shall conform to all applicable ordinances, laws, and regulations of any governmental jurisdiction. The use shall have adequate water, sewer, and drainage facilities. Ingress and egress shall be so designated as to minimize traffic congestion in public streets. The use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and the use shall be in harmony with the character of the area and the most appropriate use of the land. So if you vote in favor of this motion, those findings would accompany your vote.
Thank you.
Real quick question. When is the road, when are we repairing the road that goes up to that fillip part? When is that gonna come into play? Because if they're talking about wanting to do any kind of looking at the road and traffic, I could see that road repair that we just passed would cause major problems with getting an accurate even assessment of the situation this summer.
You wouldn't be able to do a study during construction, but that construction is not scheduled to start until later in the summer and that would all be west of there considerably.
Okay.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Okay, item number nine, adopt recommendation by the North Platt Planning Commission for preliminary and final approval of North Platt Hospitality, First RePlatt, located at 2102 South Jeffers.
I may move that we adopt the recommendation by the North Platt Planning Commission for preliminary and final approval of North Platt Hospitality, First RePlatt, located at 2102 South Jeffers.
Can I ask a question or two of Judy on this one?
Why, sure you can.
Or whoever wants to answer it. And I may have these, probably answer, I want to make sure I understand these properly. So the way, the way I understand this is that for Lot 1 to be compliant on, today from a parking requirement standpoint, it would require further development. Then, in other words, the parking spaces that today sit with Lot 2 and Lot 3 are needed for Lot 1 to be compliant with our city's parking requirements, right?
Basically, the way the parking requirements read is that you have to have a certain number of onsite parking. So by splitting off Lot 2 and Lot 3, it is taking away a number of those parking stalls that would be considered onsite to now be considered off-site. So that would make it not compliant with the standards. What the applicant said is, he kind of said, you know, "We have all this other space that we could develop that would make it compliant." So what Planning Commission did was they said, "Okay, you've got all this other space to the west of Lot 1 that if that parking were developed, it would make it comply with current standards because that would be onsite parking." However, it's not developed. So what Planning Commission said was, "We'll go ahead and accept it as long as we have a bond or something saying that these will be completed." Or if the applicant wants to just complete it, complete and develop those parking stalls, then it would comply. What the applicant provided you with was shared parking agreement for the two lots so that that would allow for some shared parking that's there. And then at the Planning Commission meeting, the representatives said that they probably, the applicant probably would not have a problem with also leaving a bond or allowing a bond for future development of that parking.
So does, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, that's on the west side of the existing hotel?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no, you're fine, Jim.
Yeah, there's kind of a map that they did provide and I do have it on the big screen if you want. That kind of shows some additional parking. And to the west of the property, this side, where it's drawn in, it looks in pencil, is where there's parking that's not developed. It's grass right now, maybe some gravel, dirt.
You got that in your jacket, I think.
Okay, so if they came to, if this project was bare ground today and they were gonna construct the hotel, convention center, same amount of square footage, rooms, same footprint, would they be allowed to use off-site parking?
No.
As to, okay, so at that point?
To meet the requirement for onsite parking. Every new development that happens, there's a requirement for a certain number of stalls, depending on what that is, onsite or off-street parking, onsite parking. So we don't allow, I mean, there are other places that do shared parking, but that doesn't, they aren't sharing the parking to meet that requirement. They have to meet that requirement in order to be approved. So if this all came in at a blank slate, we would have them improve that parking on that west side.
That's a, I understand that that would be some kind of escrowed funds or some type of financial bond that would have a period of time that if the parking didn't get completed, would the city then have to go into private property with that bond and complete the parking? Or how, I mean, that seems like a really clumsy process.
That's something for somebody other than me to answer, but yes, there is a thing that we have that's a surety bond.
It would be my suggestion or my recommendation that what would happen is, because again, the owner doesn't, isn't for sure what he's gonna do that in, but when he comes in for his building permit to put whatever is up in there, that would be the time to address that parking because immediately he's not gonna even qualify on the site for it without the shared parking.
But if he sold that lot to somebody and they came to the city for a building permit, that could be a difficult situation, right?
The same rules would apply.
The Platt has it on there that says that no development can occur on Lot 2 or Lot 3 without that additional parking being completed on Lot 1. So even if he sold it to somebody else and that other person was gonna start building on Lot 2, he would have to complete his Lot 1 parking.
Okay. Worry a little bit about us having a party who not, I don't mean that they're planning to do a workaround on the city or anything, we're being the same way, but if somebody was to buy that lot, I could imagine them coming to us and asking for. I mean, it feels to me like a little bit of a workaround on our parking requirements. If we're able to ask the applicant questions, I'd be interested in why they want to go this route instead of, instead of just getting the parking developed ahead of time to where then the city wouldn't need to be concerned about it.
Hello, I'm Sunny Gali, the owner of the site. So my, if you look at this drawing over there, I made a drawing showing some trucks parking over there. If you see where the development has to be, that Lot 2 and Lot 3. Now, currently, every night, there's trucks parked over there. Unfortunately, they don't even stay with our hotel. They're staying, either they're sleeping in there or staying at the Fairfield next door. So matter of fact, for two years that we have owned this place, those trucks have always been there. With their presence, it still be the parking has not been an issue at all. And that's one thing. So basically, those two lots are replacing those trucks parking. If I forbid a truck parking on my lot, that would suffice automatically. So those back lots, department, might not even be needed. But again, that was an additional offer that I was saying that before we develop, just like Judy was saying, when we come back for permits to develop anything, at that point, if you still feel that we need to develop that, we'll do it, no problem. But that truck thing, kind of, each truck takes 15 parking. I went today, I measured myself. So there was a trucks, I took a picture also. So those two trucks, on an average, two or three trucks are out there every night. So it's not actually affecting at all on those parts. And if it all does, we have that as a backup line. Secondly, the parking requirements were based on three different factors. One is the hotel. Second is the convention center. And third is the restaurant. So combinedly, we needed 247 So combinedly, we needed two hundred and forty-seven or something like that number, and then we already up more than that. The convention center business is ninety percent daytime. So eighty percent daytime, twenty percent in the evening. The restaurant is mostly evening. There's no breakfast, lunches are only a few days. And hotel business is hundred percent night business. So this parking lot actually alters, by the time people check in, nine, nine o'clock, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, the other business is already gone. So that was another thought I had. The neighbor's lot for premier parking, premier hospitality, who owned both the lots before they sold one to us, their part is open, it's facing our, on the north side of the building, and it's been used by us, because nobody's there all the time, and trucks park over there too, so. I, I don't want to congestion my lot, cause I own both the, all three businesses, so of course I don't want that. So it took me some time to assess that and it made, of course, my assessment doesn't mean much, of course, your assessment is more important, but I think it should be pretty, pretty much a lot, lot of parking for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Item number ten, consider action on recommendation by CDS inspections and beyond for approval of one owner occupied rehab project for a resident of the city of North Platte, totaling twenty-five thousand dollars in CDBG funds as part of the sixteen dash HO dash three-three-zero-six-six program.
Move that we adopt the recommendation by the CDS inspections and beyond for approval of one owner occupied rehab project for a resident of the city of North Platte, totaling twenty-five thousand dollars in CDBG funds as part of the sixteen dash HO dash thirty-three oh-six-six program.
And that motion passes. Item number eleven, consider resolution consenting to sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on East Fifth Street and Dewey Street for a Platte River cruise night on July thirteenth, twenty nineteen.
Move that we approve the resolution consenting to the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor on East Fifth Street and North Dewey Street for Platte River cruise night on July thirteenth, twenty nineteen.
Yes, sir.
Police department has no problems, no qualms with alcoholic beverages on grounds, police cars, no? Okay.
Motion passes. Item number twelve, approve application by United States Junior Chamber of Commerce, North Platte J.C.'s for a special designated license on July thirteenth, twenty nineteen, from twelve P.M. to one A.M. on East Fifth Street and North Dewey Street for the Platte River Cruise Night.
Move that we approve the application by United States Junior Chamber of Commerce, D.B.A., North Platte J.C.'s for a special designated license on July thirteenth, twenty nineteen, from twelve P.M. to one A.M. on East Fifth Street and North Dewey Street for Platte River Cruise Night.
In the agenda title, should we call out for a liquor license on there?
What are you saying? Are you saying it's not in the agenda?
What, what is this for? It, it just says designated license.
It's a one-day permit, that's what they're called, the special designated license.
And that passes as well. Item number thirteen, third reading and action on ordinance number four zero zero three, amending section number ninety-four dash zero two one of the North Platte Code of Ordinances, adopting the NFPA one oh-one life safety code, twenty twelve edition, and NFPA one fire code, twenty twelve edition. Yes, please.
An ordinance of the city of North Platte, Link County, Nebraska, amending sections ninety-four point oh-two-one of the municipal code of the city relating to the adoption of the NFPA one oh-one life safety code, twenty twelve edition, including the NFPA one fire code, twenty twelve edition. Repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict or with, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Move that we approve on third and final reading ordinance number four thousand and three, amending section ninety-four point zero two one of the North Platte Code of Ordinances, adopting the NFPA one oh-one life safety code, twenty twelve edition, and NFPA one fire code, twenty twelve edition.
And that motion passes. And number fourteen, authorize mayor to sign mutual finance assistance fund agreement pursuant to the Nebraska Mutual Finance Assistant Act, Nebraska Rev. statute thirty-five dash one-two-zero-one.
Move that we authorize the mayor to sign mutual finance assistance fund agreement pursuant to the Nebraska Mutual Finance Assistant Act, Nebraska Rev. statute thirty-five twelve oh-one.
Motion passes. And item number fifteen, adopt resolution for Nebraska Land Days Parade in accordance with Nebraska Department of Roads Permission requirements.
Move that we adopt resolution for Nebraska Land Days Parade in accordance with Nebraska Department of Roads Permission requirements.
Motion passes. And item number sixteen, accept and approve proposal by T.S.P. Design Refine to provide a North Platte Recreation Center master plan for the cost of eight thousand eight hundred dollars plus reimbursable expenses, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Move that we accept the proposal by T.S.P. Design Refine to provide a North Platte Recreation Center master plan for a cost of eighty-eight hundred dollars plus reimbursed, reimbursable expenses, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Sure.
From somebody on the group, do you got one question that I thought of since our work session? So you brought up all those different points of things that, you know, North Platte said they wanted in previous studies and stuff. Is that gonna be your guiding point to what they're putting into this? Or are they just gonna, on the rehab, I was trying to figure it out based on the letters that they, that were written, that are in the packet? Or are you guys using like the, I'm trying to figure out, are you using those previous plans that were shown to us? And just say, hey, re-finalize the cost on these, or are you adjusting those?
The company, the company that we're using will actually look at that, look at our green play study in addition to the, the current study.
So they may redraw them from the originals, or the last round?
They may redraw them, just depending on, on what we, when we start to look at cost, there may be some better ideas in how to save costs by redrawing.
That's what I was curious, I didn't know if they were just updating those or if they were, you know, potentially redrawing things.
Potentially redrawing.
Okay.
And for the record, I'm Fiona Libsack, I'm the co-chair of the Mayor's Task Force, which is the North Platte Recreation Wellness Alliance. I have several committee members here, my co-chair is here as well. And I just wanted to say for the record too, that this, the eighty-eight hundred dollars that will be used for this study is purely donations, it does not come from city coffers. It is from private citizens who are interested in, in looking at the rec center and how we can rehabilitate that facility.
In, in your study, are you gonna be looking, what, what models are you gonna be looking at? Are you gonna be looking at a totally government operated system, a?
Very good question. So last time we talked at the work session, we talked about financing and how this might work. And as part of a subcommittee of our overall committee, we have a finance committee that's led by Dr. Rich Raska, and he will be pulling a team together to look at a lot of funding models, but also look at sustainability models. And so that'll be part of the research going forward, once we know what we're working with.
Does that incorporate different ownership models as well?
Possibly. Yeah, yeah, they'll be looking at a lot of different areas. The sustainability piece will be looking at what you're speaking to. And then we'll bring all of that back to council.
Soon.
Hopefully, yes. Hopefully, we can move very quickly, we just need approval. Any other questions?
Fiona, when do you expect to have this report back?
I haven't talked to the company yet, because we, we haven't had the approval to do that yet, but once we do, I'll have a better date, I can email that out to you.
Are you thinking like a week, two weeks, a month, or?
I, I would think they would need at least a month, but.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Having not been involved in this part of it before, Jim, you probably have a better idea than I do.
Probably sixty to ninety days.
Yeah, that feels more likely to me.
Thank you.
Just so we're clear, the city's not paying for this?
City is not paying for this.
In more than one way.
Maybe we should be.
And that motion passes.
Motion to pay the claims.
Thank you Fiona.
Second.
Oh no, y'all got ahead of me, I assume that's for the claims? Okay, that motion passes, thank you.
I got a dumb question.
Motion to adjourn.
Does anybody wanna adjourn before? Awesome, alright. Does anybody agree with that? Thought I'd check.